I would like to call this village board meeting on Thursday, August 15, 2024 to order. Will the court please take the rule?
Mayor Coker?
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt?
Here.
Trustee Siddiqui?
Here.
Trustee Light?
Here.
Trustee Maritato? Trustee Pojak?
Here.
Trustee Schroder?
Here.
Please stand and join me in saying the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Constitution of the United States, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We now move on to... Excuse me, Mr. Coker, I have something to say. I have two items. Mr. Coker, another lawsuit. This makes three or four against you, plus two felony charges against you. When will this stop? While the Board of Trustees are in total agreement, we want you to resign immediately. And we will need an answer now. Can I have an answer? Yes or no? No comments. No comments, okay? Uh, second item, I want to call for, I need a motion to call for executive session. We need a roll call vote.
Well, we need to call what the call for is.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Are you asking to add it to the agenda? Are you making that motion?
I'm gonna do it now.
Are you making that motion right now?
Yes, I am, sir.
There's a motion on the floor, so they would add, but we need... We would need the, what the basis for...
I'm gonna read it now.
Okay, go ahead.
Present pending litigation probable imminent litigation pursuant to open meeting act five. Ongoing prior future criminal investigation pursuant pursuant to open meetings act ILS 120 slash two C 14. Collective bargaining matters between public body and its employees or their representations. And appoint...
Are there, are you reading more than one reason?
Yeah.
No, just that you...
Just that one. Okay, the first one. Pending litigation probable imminent litigation.
And you have the citation on that?
Pursuant to open meeting act five ILCS 120 slash two C 11.
Alright, so it's the one, the one reason.
Right.
So there is a motion on the floor to go into executive session.
We need a second.
Correct.
A second.
There was a secondary.
Okay.
Need a roll call vote or all in favor?
Roll call.
It would be a roll call vote.
Roll call.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
Trustee Siddiqui?
Yes.
Trustee Light?
Yes.
Trustee Pojak?
Yes.
Trustee Schroder?
Yes. Thank you.
So I guess we're temporarily recessing to executive session. Alright.
Uh, we are resuming today's meeting Thursday, August 15, 2024. We now move on to sessions and communications. Community announcement. Trustee Schmidt, please.
Glendale Heights Police Department is hosting their annual Citizens Police Academy. The Citizens Police Academy will be held on Wednesdays from September 4th through November 13th and features a realistic view of police work taught by Glendale Heights Police Officers. Enrollment is free and open to citizens 18 years of age and older who live or work in Glendale Heights. Applications for enrollment can be downloaded and printed from the village website. For more information, contact the police department's non-emergency number at 630-260-6070. If you just finished cleaning out the basement, attic, and garage and you're looking for a place to sell your stuff, then join us for the annual community garage sale on Sunday, September 22nd from 9:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. at Camera Park. If you have nothing to sell, then come out and shop for bargains from many different sellers. For registration information, contact the Sports Hub at 630-260-6060. Thank you.
Address is the G H 2 O.
Creative Center's last day of season is Monday, September 2nd. Postseason pool hours begin August 12th and the pool will only be open on Saturdays and Sundays from noon to 5:00 p.m. Stop by and cool off in the pool and soak up the sun. For more information on G H 2 O and the postseason hours, contact the Sports Hub at 630-260-6060. Join us at Veterans Memorial Park every Thursday for Glendale Heights seasonal market. Shop for food, produce, crafts, and more from locally sourced vendors. The market runs from 11:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. If you would like to be a vendor or for more information, please contact Tanya McCall at 630-909-5459.
Trustee Light, please.
The Village of Glendale Heights has many years of history dating back to our founding date of July 13, 1959. Yes, that's before I was born. The village invites everyone to attend our open house at Glendale Heights Historic House on Saturday, August 24th from 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. Learn all the rich history of our community. The Historic House is located at 311 Windy Point Drive at Heritage Park. We will be partnering with the Linda Jackson Center for Senior Citizens for a special senior citizen day. For more information, please contact myself, Trustee Michael Light, at 630-909-5308 or Jessica at 630-260-6060.
Claire Schmidt, please.
Wait, I have one more to go. Yep, my favorite one. The Village of Glendale Heights is gearing up for the annual Show and Shine Car Show and Swap Meet at Camera Park on Sunday, September 22nd from 10:00 a.m. to 3:30 p.m. There will be 18 classes of vehicles on display along with a swap meet, food, music, and more. If interested in registering a vehicle or signing up to be a swap meet vendor or crafter, please visit glendale, uh, www.glandalehighs.org/carshow to download a registration form. For more information, please contact myself once again at 630-909-5308. I look forward to seeing everyone at both events. Thank you.
Claire Schmidt, please.
School is back in session and it is very important to obey speed limits, especially in school zones, and to remain extra cautious and alert for children while driving through our community. Pay extra attention around parked cars, school crossings, bus stops, and anywhere else children might be present. Students should try and keep a regular route to and from school and never walk alone. Always remember to follow traffic signals and crossing guards. For more information, please contact the police department's non-emergency number at 630-260-6070. Candidate packets are now available for the April 1st, 2025 consolidated election. The following offices in the Village of Glendale Heights will be on the ballot. Village President, Village Clerk, and Trustees for District 2, 5, and 6, depending on which district you reside in. Petition information and packets are available at the Village Clerk's office located on the second floor of Village Hall. For more information, please contact myself, Marie Schmidt, at 630-909-5333.
Trustee Pajal. The Village of Glendale Heights invites you to the annual Glendale Heights Charity Golf Classic on Wednesday, August 28th at 10:30 a.m. shotgun start at Glendale Heights Golf Club. This year, the Charity Golf Classic will be raising funds for local Glendale Heights organizations and charities. If you would like more information and wish to become a host sponsor or make a raffle pride donation, please call Glendale Heights Golf Club at 630-260-0018. Help us make the annual Charity Golf Classic another great success. The Village of Glendale Heights remembers Patriot Day on Wednesday, September 11th with the silent parade of first responder vehicles, followed by a candlelight service at 7:15 p.m. on the front steps of the Village Hall. Please join the Village of Glendale Heights and the Glendale Heights community as we come together for a moment of silence and reflection on Patriot Day. Never forget those who lost, we lost on September 11, 2001. For more information, please, for more information, please call Jessica at 630-260-6060. Trustee Schroder, please.
The next coffee and chat with the village president and board will be on Saturday, September the 7th at the Linda Jackson Center for Senior Citizens from 10:00 a.m. to noon. If you are unable to attend and you have any comments, suggestions, or questions for the village president or the village board, please call the village president's office anytime at 630-909-5302 or contact your local trustee district.
Number two, a proclamation to proclaim August 31st, 2024 as International Overdose Awareness Day. If there are no objection, I will sign this proclamation. Any objection? None. Next is C, public discussion of agenda items. Is there anyone in the public that would like to address this board on an agenda item only? Anyone from public? None. You have the consent agenda before you, Mr. Fren, what do you, acting village administrator? Please read the consent agenda.
Thank you, Mayor. Consent agenda, one, approval of the regular board amendments of August 1st, 2024. Two, approval of committee the whole meeting minutes of August 1st, 2024. Three, approval of accounts payable listing of August 15th, 2024 in the amount of $3,428,952.95. Four, resolution authorizing issuance of a notice of award and authorizing execution of a contract for the purchase and installation of replacement telephone system for the Village of Glendale Heights, Illinois. Five, resolution authorizing execution of a change order number two final for the North Avenue I and I repairs project, phase two in Avogec, Glendale Heights, Illinois. Six, a resolution of authorization for the OzLED program Simon's Property. Seven, resolution authorizing issuance of a notice of award and authorizing execution of a contract for tree removal and disposal services to Homer Tree Care Incorporated and rejecting all bids for emergency tree services. Eight, approval of pay request number 11 to IHC Construction Companies LLC for the wastewater treatment plant phosphorus removal upgrades. Total amount not to exceed $963,164.98. Nine, approval of pay request number one to Oakbrook Mechanical Services for HVAC replacement at the Village of Glendale Heights Civic Center. Total amount not to exceed $65,706.71. Ten, approval of pay request number two to Oakbrook Mechanical Services for HVAC replacement at the Village of Glendale Heights Civic Center. Total amount not to exceed $32,693.29. Eleven, approval of pay request number five final to Hor construction for the North Avenue I and I repairs project, phase two. Total amount not to exceed $163,043.61. Twelve is approval of consent items.
Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? I need motion, uh, Trustee Schmidt?
I move that the board approve the consent agenda as presented.
Trustee Light, second. Roll call vote, please.
I have a quick question about the Simon's property. Doug, do you know when this project will start?
Well, this is the resolution that gets us to the grant process.
Okay.
So we're resubmitting the grant we submitted last year. So this resolution tells the state that we have the funding available for the match of the grant.
Okay, and how much we are matching?
Well, it's about a million dollar project.
Okay.
So it's, it's between...
Up to 600,000.
The, the grant is for up to 600,000.
Well. So we are matching like 400K?
It depends on what the final project...
On defensive day, they give us 600.
Correct.
Anybody else? Uh, vote. Roll call vote, please.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
Trustee Siddiqui?
Yes.
Trustee Light?
Yes.
Trustee Pojak?
Yes.
Trustee Schroder?
Yes.
The consent agenda is approved. Old business, there's none. New business, number one, a motion to waive first reading on new business items two and three. Is there a motion to waive first reading on new business items two and three? Trustee Light?
So moved.
Trustee Siddiqui?
Second.
Discussion. None. Roll call vote, please.
Trustee Siddiqui?
Yes.
Trustee Light?
Yes.
Trustee Pojak?
Yes.
Trustee Schroder?
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
The motion to waive first reading on new business items two and three is approved. Number two, an ordinance to waive bid to authorize the issuance of notice of award and to authorize the execution of contract for Minard Pond Restoration Project. First reading is waived. This is ordinance 2024-55. Is there a motion to adopt ordinance 2024-55? Trustee Schmidt?
So moved.
Trustee Light, second. Uh, this, discussion. None. Uh, roll call vote, please.
Trustee Light?
Yes.
Trustee Pojak?
Yes.
Trustee Schroder?
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
Trustee Siddiqui?
Yes.
The motion to adopt ordinance 2024-55 is approved. Number three, an ordinance to waive bid and accept the proposal of standard equipment company for the repair of village. 2010 Vector Equipment First Reading is waived. This is ordinance 2024-56. Is there a motion to adopt ordinance 2024-56? Trustee Light?
So moved.
Trustee Schmidt?
Second.
Discussion.
Yes. One quick question. How long is this repair gonna take? Will we be, I mean, we've got two of them, right? So not like we're in the middle of a heavy season. They didn't give us a timeline, but I'm, I'm expecting maybe a couple of weeks. Uh, they have the machine, uh, they know what needs to be done, so I wouldn't expect it to be too long.
Alright.
Cool.
Alright. Anybody else? None. Roll call vote, please.
Trustee Pojak?
Yes.
Trustee Schroder?
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
Trustee Siddiqui?
Yes.
Trustee Light?
Yes.
The motion to adopt ordinance 2024-56 is approved. Public discussion on agenda items. Is there anyone in the public that would like to address this board on an agenda item only? Anyone from public? None.
Kim Darlin.
Kim Darlin, yes, go ahead, please. Sorry, agency.
Sorry. Can someone tell me what the restoration is? Kim Darlin Greenbrier. Yeah.
So we had some invasive beavers back there that literally took down most of the trees that were planted back there that were native.
Okay.
And all of the native grasses and other native plants that were back there. So we...
You're talking on the big pond, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, to the south of Minar. The village owns that property.
Right.
So the beavers, uh, were relocated humanely, out of state.
Seriously, we relocated beavers?
Yes, we did. Humanely, out of state.
Out of state?
Yes, we didn't want them coming back. And, uh, so we're restoring the natural habitat that is there with the natural grasses and everything that goes around the retention area for restoration. So the company that is doing it is, has the five-year maintenance contract. There's only a couple of companies that actually can do these native plantings and native grasses. So they have the, they have the five-year maintenance plan, so they're doing the restoration.
Okay.
But the beavers did considerable, I mean considerable damage back there to the trees and grasses.
So bad that we had to remove them to a different state?
Yes. Because they weren't gonna stop just chopping all the trees down.
Okay.
So which lucky state got that beaver? Alright, good luck, Michigan. Oregon.
Anybody else from public? None. Executive session, we already took that. Now I need motion to adjourn this meeting, board meeting. Trustee Light?
Motion to adjourn.
And trustee?
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Trustee Schroder? Motion to adjourn. Mary?
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
Trustee Siddiqui?
Yes.
Trustee Light?
Yes.
Trustee Pojak?
Yes. This meeting is adjourned. Committee at a home meeting agenda for Thursday, August 15, 2024. I'd like to call this committee at a home meeting to order with the clerk, please note who is present.
Noted.
Does anyone have any additions or deletions?
I have.
Mr. Siddiqui?
Yeah, walk, senior walk.
What is it?
Walk, senior walk. Just like, you know, run.
Anybody else? No? Okay. Committee reports. Run the elect golf club. Pat's not here. Anybody wanna take it? Nope, we'll skip it. Historical committee.
Yes, I do actually have one. Um, I just wanted to say it again, August 24th, 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. Let's come out and celebrate our seniors at our, our senior day there. I think it should be really, really very well attended. Uh, come out, see some of the history, some of the museum part, some of the house itself, how it looks. And if you have anything that is really of vintage, anything to deal with Glendale Heights, you know, and its history, and you wanna donate it, please let me know. I would appreciate that. Thank you.
Ordinance committee.
No report.
Parks and Rec committee, that's Pat again. Property enhancement committee.
No report.
Senior citizens advisory committee.
No report.
Thank you. There's no discussion? Others? Uh, Mr. Siddiqui?
Yeah. Uh, I wanna talk about, uh, like, you know, after uh, we done seasonal market and garden committee, those are really good programs which I initiated. I come to an idea, uh, because there is a senior in my, uh, district two who's a wet walker. And since we don't have Stratford Mall anymore, uh, he really having hard time, you know, going to walk on the roads, especially in the wintertime. So I'm suggesting, and I need board's help, that maybe, you know, if we can offer our senior just a walkway for our gym. I'm not talking about, uh, the gym membership, just to provide them so they can walk over there. And if we can provide them with a free, uh, some kind of a service that a card which we can make for them so they can use that facility for their walking. Because now the Stratford Mall is gone. People who are, who really wanna walk, really don't have any place unless they wanna go to Oakbrook Mall or some other way. So that's my suggestion, and I hope the board will, uh, you know, look at this, that they can allow, especially our seniors, this facility for free.
So we have a lot of walkers that come in and do that now?
Okay, so is it...
So that's certainly something that we can accommodate.
Okay.
So put that... Yeah.
Yeah, that's what I'm...
They, we have people that walk both upstairs because they don't like the track. They walk the track. I mean, we have a number of different areas that people can...
So they can use it for free?
We can certainly talk about making that something that's very...
Yeah, that's my other, it's, it's because, you know, um, we don't have, uh... It, it was great when we have the Stratford Mall because I saw a lot of people go over there and they do walking. But since, because it's, we are, as a, you know, city, we will be providing a healthy activity for the senior. And I think if they are not using our equipment, just using our track, it shouldn't be, we shouldn't charge them.
Mr. Siddiqui? I do my walking at Woodman's and I shop at the same time. That's a long store, back and forth, back and forth. Ask anybody.
You'll never find anything.
Yeah, but, uh, I mean, I want to contribute, uh, our city in that program, so that's the reason. So I know, Woodman, yeah, but a lot of people, like, you know, they wanna use, uh, so it's, it's... We can look into that and then Keith, if you can let me know.
I'll come back, absolutely.
Yep, thank you. That's all, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Alright, the next one on the list is Bredda, Bredda, Moretta Britt.
We're starting public comment yet?
Yes. State your name.
Marietta Britt, Moretta Britt, whichever one works for you. Um, over the past, I have spoken about, um, what I look for in an effective public representative of our village. And I just wanna remind everyone that I was going through the, uh, website and I noticed that the packets are ready for our next election. So I've also spoken with a number of people who have approached me because they see me and I'm very vocal. They said, I like what you have to say, so I'm just gonna say it the way I think it needs to be said. Honesty and self-respect is what we're looking for in representatives of our village. Doing what's right in the dark. High level of integrity. Are you plotting with others or having meetings that you wouldn't invite everyone else to? That's not a good representative of an entire village. You have to make sure that you have self-respect for yourself. Because if you can't respect yourself, to quote RuPaul, one of my favorite, uh, people, how in the heck can you respect others? How can you look at yourself in the mirror knowing that you're not being a good representative? Are you afraid to speak with someone when you see them in public? That's not a good representative. You need to respect residents, not just one group, but for the whole group. You don't, you don't represent a piece of the pie. Do you sit at the deus and signal to people when they should and should not speak? What is eventual, what is done in the dark will eventually come to light. If you have a criminal past or arrests, I worked in corporate America for a bank. I had a lot of coworkers who were escorted out of the door. No elected official should have the type of press that we've been having in Glendale Heights. It should not be acceptable. It is not acceptable. Glendale Heights is a great place to live, but I am not totally proud of the press we've been getting. Mr. Coker, you should resign. Because here's the thing. You have caused the village a lot of money. You are continuing to cause us the loss of money. My tax dollars should not be going paying your lawsuits. I would ask the, the village board and our attorney to find out if all of these extra fees that we are paying can come out directly out of his pocket. So I'm just asking anyone who's getting ready to turn in their packet, think about what I just said. Because we want to be proud of our village. Thank you.
Thank you, Maria.
Chester, just, Chester, just so you know, the timer's up on the screen.
Oh, okay. Didn't even see that.
It's new.
I know it's new.
That's new.
Uh, Mr. Anavero, you are next.
Mike Anavero, resident of Glendale Heights. I'm deeply disturbed by recent events that once again take our community a step back, not forward. Lawsuits involving a certain individual in this governing body in the village of Glendale Heights are becoming commonplace. The village of Glendale Heights is making front page news for all the wrong reasons. This has to stop. Change and only change in leadership with elected officials is inevitable if we want to rebuild trust within the community. The lawsuit filed in federal court on August eighth reaffirms alleged actions taken by a certain individual in this governing body to discredit my name and the audacity to shut down my business down is nothing more than harassment and retaliation against a private citizen. As a resident for over thirty-five years, been a stone for twenty-four years, and a taxpayer just about all my life, I have the fundamental right to raise issues to this board that affect our quality of life here in Glendale Heights and ask tough questions no one else wants to. I have worked hard for years to build a solid reputation as a man of my word and earn the respect and trust of our residents along the way. I was the first person to announce my candidacy for village president, and I will say it again tonight. I, Mike Anavero, am running for village president of Glendale Heights. I will continue my efforts and focus on bringing this community together, promoting fiscal responsibility and transparency, which is crucial for fostering trust and accountability. I do look forward to meeting many of the residents and will hold several town home type events to get a pulse on the concerns and the needs of the community. And as a reminder to everyone again, the elections are April first, two thousand twenty-five. If you're not registered, I encourage you to be registered. Your vote matters, every vote counts. Thank you.
Is there anybody in the public that would like to address this board? Step forward.
Hello, uh, my name's, it's not, it's not Sing Mago. You've heard me speak many times and, uh, a song that comes to mind, the wheels on the bus go round and round, round and round, round and round. And one of the things about that is the wheels on the bus must go round. And honestly, I wonder if you guys, uh, I have been talking about ethical investments in this, uh, community. I think there's a lot of humanitarian reasons for it. There's coming up a lot of economic reasons for it too. And I think that one of the things that trusting, uh, pension plans to be dictated by the state, where they're supplying defense contractors, at a moment when Israel has about forty-six thousand companies going bankrupt, literally right now, um, Colombia and South Africa is where Israel gets their coal from, so they're unable to resume, they have energy blackouts. That's third world country stuff. So one thing that we're realizing is our tax dollars props up this country, um, so that they can continue this occupation, this genocide, all of those things. But their credit score is being downgraded. So if we have any investments in Boeing and if we're doing something where we're, we have dirty investments in violation of the Leahy Act, um, and it's the state pension plan that is doing that investing, then maybe Glendale Heights needs to not be on the state pension plan. So I think that one of the things that we should look at is the future from a humanitarian standpoint, but also from an economic standpoint, if we're invested in these companies that are failing because Israel can't get energy production to the point where they don't have rolling blackouts anymore. They have forty-six thousand businesses going under. They can't, like, they lost a twenty-five billion dollar contract with Intel because they can't ensure that server rooms are going to have twenty-four seven electricity. We just celebrated India-Pakistan independence, uh, the last couple of days. Um, you know, Glendale Heights hosted, uh, an event, uh, it was great, whatever. It's the same colonial powers that kept India and Pakistan in the partition predicament that they're in. And also anybody who's here that is of South Asian descent understands rolling blackouts are things of a, of a developing country, not a first world ally. So are our investments protected? Is this community's investment's going to grow if we don't look at ethical investment as a common practice? So I yield my time, but I think you guys should pursue a bill that looks at ethical investments within Glendale Heights. Thank you.
Does anybody else want? Please step forward, state your name.
Kim Darling-Greenbrier. Mohammed, why can't you resident use the senior center? Why can't your resident use the senior center to walk?
What senior center?
Five dollars.
What?
It's five dollars to join the senior center and you get to walk at the sports hub for free.
Oh, I didn't know that. I will tell you.
There we go.
Anybody else?
Ed Pope Wayne Avenue. No negative, just good stuff. Um, I want to thank Doug for taking care of an extremely dangerous situation on North Avenue. I talked to him last board meeting on Thursday night about a tree that had overgrown into North Avenue, and he literally had it taken care of on Friday morning. So I know a lot of people went into helping you with that, but that's the kind of things that make us proud to live in Glendale Heights when we take care of important things for our residents, and that was very, done very quickly. So thank you. Um, also want to say, uh, I went to the senior center today for my first event. Kind of a trip, um, played the trivia game. We had a blast, it was so much fun. But while I was there, um, maybe Mary could elaborate on this, but they're, uh, they're putting out a Glendale Heights Village Cookbook. And, uh, that just sounds so awesome that, uh, hopefully you guys can publicize it and hopefully people will join in. I told Patty that, uh, I'll give her a couple of recipes for it, but I thought that was really neat. So I know there's a lot of crappy things that go on, but we have to remember there's a lot of great things that go on here too. That's why we do choose to still live here. You know, Marietta has been, said, you know, we all been here a long time. We haven't left because we do love it. We just need to get out of this negative space and move back into the positive space and, and, uh, have fun again and, uh, be proud of where we live. But, so anyway, I want to say, thanks Doug. And, uh, Mary, your senior center was a blast today, so I, I really enjoyed it.
So there's, there's two things that happened last week, right? Cause Nada pointed out something at a park that we didn't know about, and we got that fixed same day. So the more the public gives me or any other department head information about stuff that isn't working or needs to get fixed, we can get that fixed right away. So the more that the, the communication from the public gets to us, the faster we get things done, so.
And I could say a lot of times to contact your trustees, because we do a very good job at following up with a lot of this stuff to make sure it gets taken care of as quick as possible.
Anybody else?
Nada, uh, Glendale Heights resident. Um, on July sixth, my cousin contacted Naperville Park District.
Excuse me. We, we really can't hear you.
Oh, okay, I'm just not feeling too good. Um, okay, can we restart that, please? The timer?
Yep.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
Uh, on July sixth, my cousin contacted Naperville Park District to observe a hut at Commissioners Park for a family gathering of nearly seventy people. Yes, it's a big family. We were informed that the reservations were not possible and the huts were available on first come, first served basis. On Fourth of July, we arrived with picnic items and coolers to celebrate a holiday peacefully. Shortly after we began eating, a police officer just showed up and demanded we vacate the premises within twenty minutes or face arrest, despite having my elderly members eating food, children playing, and peacefully alcohol music-free gathering. Um, so when the officer returned, I politely asked why we had to leave. He responded really aggressively, and despite my explanation of the park district first come, first served basis, he demanded to speak to someone in charge. My, you know me, I identified myself as a person in charge, and he questioned my willingness to take responsibility of my family, which I affirmed. He continued to interrupt me, making me feel increasingly unsafe. I felt like I had to take this higher, so I tried to photograph his name tag and he slapped my hand away, which then I felt violated and I felt, it left me feeling assaulted and unsafe. Despite following all the rules, my family was humiliated and I was racially profiled, I guess, um, at this point, because why else would this be happening? This never happened to me before. Um, the day after the incident, I sought external, external support and reassurance. While I received love and family from my friends and family, I wanted someone from the outside to acknowledge that what happened was wrong. However, the mayor of Naperville claimed it was outside of his authority. The chief of police at the park district defended his officer and the sergeant offered only excuses. None showed empathy, leaving me feeling alone and vulnerable. However, I am here to express my appreciation, actually. When I shared my situation with a local civic group, trustee Siddiqui responded quickly, offering support and reaffirming his role as my representative. He assistant, he assisted, his assistant gave me strength that I, that I needed and made me proud to have such a support from my Glendale Heights representative. So I was really proud as a Glendale Heights resident at that point. That Sunday, I actually contacted Chief Pappas with questions without expectations, but despite being his day off, he called me on Sunday. He immediately showed me empathy, awesome, explained legalities, awesome, confirmed my concern, concerns, awesome, and offered his help. Chief Pappas, you exemplify true leadership. You don't see color or faith, you see faith, you see human, human in need and not only lift them, but guide them through to a better place. You don't serve one community, you serve all of us in Glendale Heights, all of us. In a world filled with leaders who serve their own interests, you stand as a beacon of hope for our future. I wish I felt the safe, safe to approach any of these issues to the rest of the board.
Ma'am, excuse me, your time is up.
I just want to say thank you.
Your time is up now.
And I respect you, and I wish more leaders were like you. And I pray to you and your family, families to continue to walk in a blessed path always, both of you. Thank you.
Sure, thank you.
Hello, good to see you all. I'm Artika King, a resident of Glendale Heights seventeen years and counselor for twenty-five mental health. Um, congratulations, boys and girls, young men, young women, who are facing another year of school. As I advise my own niece and nephew to try and discern, tell apart true teachings from false teachings, good from bad, and be kind. And, uh, parents, pay attention to, you know, what your children are learning in school, who's influencing them, how they're being influenced. And, uh, college is not the right answer for everyone. Vocational schooling can be very, very good for a lot of people. Now, twenty twenty-five, the next election, um, Mayor Coker, I wish you well, but I do not think you've earned another term. So, you know, God bless you, good luck. Um, we are also, also facing a national election. I'm just going to say very quickly, a little time, very quickly, um, if Donald Trump is not elected, I think we're facing a death sentence in this country uh, due to different dummies leading our country. Thank you very much. God bless you all.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, I need a motion.
I think there's someone.
All right.
I'm Angel. I'm going to explain this in the simplest way that many people can understand. As Patriot Day approaches, this community is getting ready to remember what happened on September eleventh, two thousand one. This is a day that is very important because we think about the people who lost their lives and how that day changed our country forever. But today I want to talk about something more. After nine eleven, many people in our country started to treat Muslims or people who look like they might be Muslim unfairly. This is called Islamophobia, which means being afraid of or hating Muslims just because of their religion. This has caused a lot of hurt, and it's not just something that happens far away. It happens right here in this community. Now, Ed just said that we need to get back into a positive space, and that's a good goal, and I agree with you. But here's the problem. Many people in our community are still having negative experiences, and some of those bad experiences are because of the actions of people and leaders in this community. When leaders don't treat everyone fairly or when they allow others to be treated unfairly, it's hard for our community to move forward in a positive way. This is why it's so important for us to hold people accountable for their actions. Accountability means that when someone does something wrong, especially if it hurts others, they need to take responsibility and make it right. Only when we do this can we start to create a community where everyone feels safe, respected, and valued. As we prepare for Patriot Day, let's not just remember the past, but also think about how we can make our community better today. Let's work together to stop Islamophobia and make sure that everyone, no matter who they are, is treated fairly. And let's make sure that our leaders and all of us are held accountable so we can truly move toward the positive space that Ed talked about. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Hi, my name is Venus, and yes, I'm not a Glendale Heights resident. And even though it shouldn't matter, I've been called an outsider time and time again. But as someone who has deep ties to Glendale Heights and someone who's a weekly visitor in Glendale Heights uh, and contributes to the economy, I believe my voice matters. For months, we've been pleading to the blind eyes and deaf ears of this board and have come to the conclusion that you simply do not care about what happens to humans who look like me. We all know exactly what you think of us smelly food-cooking, Indian-Pakistani mosque-going Muslim terrorists. You've, um, another employee said that. I'm just quoting them. Um, you've made it very clear, so, but nothing is about us anymore. The debt toll in Gaza has now surpassed forty thousand innocent civilians, out of which seventy percent are women and children, twenty-one hundred and counting are under the age of two. But we know that you don't care. You don't want to see the genocide. You don't want to even hear about it. A simple gesture of your humanity, a symbolic, symbolic ceasefire resolution would have gone down in the history of Glendale Heights. But that was too much of an ask for this board. So I'd like it if you could give me the respect, the absolute bare minimum, so we can give respect and honor our martyrs with the rest of my speaking time to be spent in a prayer and a moment of silence.
Thank you, ma'am. Anybody else want to address the board? Need a motion, oh.
Hi, name's Robinson. I'm not visiting this community, I live in this community.
Can you move that mic up a little bit to your mouth? There you go, thank you.
I'm not visiting this community, I live in this community. I've been here for like forty years in this community. I've been involved in this community. Everything that happens here is, I consider it my business. Stuff that happens in other communities is not my business, I feel. I'm curious, as far as what they say that, um, they talk about, we should disconnect from, from, uh, companies that are, they've talked about the rolling blackouts. Should we just dismiss California? There's rolling blackouts all over California. Let's cut ties with Cal, business in California, everybody close their laptops. Let's cut ties with Cal, business in California. Everybody close their laptops. End your ties with Google, the internet, all the business, chips, computer chips, everything. Let's end business in California if that's the way they want it, but I bet they still got stock in those companies. Here's a garbage can right here on the floor. Let's see how many cell phones are in this garbage can at the end of the meeting today to cut their ties with Third World countries that are on rolling blackouts. Thank you.
Anybody else?
My name is Sayed. Well, that was pretty good what you said about California. While twenty billion dollars were just given to Israel for weapons, California is having rolling blackouts. That money should have been invested over here. I don't know what you guys are thinking. The divestment is to keep the money in United States of America, not sending it off to foreign countries which are taking our investments and living a life of luxury. Other thing is, right now, US is working on a, on a proposal to give Americans who serve in the Israeli military for the IOF, Israeli Occupation Force, American servicemen uh, military benefits for serving in a foreign country and killing innocent people. Think about that. That money could be used here for our veterans, for our homeless people, for our senior citizens that can go to the park facilities and walk for free. It's time to wake up.
Thank you. Anybody else? Anybody, we need a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Have a good night, people.